Please stand.
Yeah.
Please join us for the graduation of the students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll call this regular school board meeting for independent school district number five forty-four to order, and turn to the clerk to establish our form. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Bernies here, and Stephen Biggess.
Here.
We have a forum. All right, thank you. And look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved and will move into our reports and we'll begin with Principal Mark Anderson in regard to the five by three high school schedule. So welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks.
So this will be my third kind of go around with you guys. One of the things we always do at the high school, when we do any type of presentations, we usually have one of these three or all of these three in our presentation. So obviously you guys are aware of our mission statement, our values and our beliefs. And then our portrait of a graduate, which we also now have hung in all our classrooms or in offices. So, and our essential question is how will we continue to produce a school-wide culture of excellence and rigor for all students so students feel valued, heard and accountable to foster positive energy and joy in our school community? We put those up to stay focused on our strategic plan and making sure in our decisions that we come forward to you with meet those expectations and guide us in our decision-making at the high school. Tonight, later, you'll be voting on the trimester schedule. This was what the five-period day will look like next year. There'll be sixty-seven-minute classes, so periods one, two, three, four and five will all be sixty-seven minutes. Period three is roughly ninety-some just because you have lunch added in there, so you have to have additional time for multiple lunches. We have two lunches right now, but with the size of the building and the number of students we'll have next year, there might be a three-wave in there, which won't affect that schedule at all. It'll just affect a teacher who teaches sixty-seven minutes will get thirty and then thirty-seven. That will help out downstairs this year. Our second wave is really big. And we have some kids who like to stand instead of eating places that their friends aren't sitting at, so it'll be something we're looking at for next year. So outer time will be right after lunch for thirty minutes every day, and I'll get into individual pieces on those in one of our other slides. Questions about the minutes in classes or anything like that? And our teachers would teach four or five. This is what we are recommending for graduation for credits. So next year's seniors would have fifty-two credits. The juniors next year would have fifty-three in their senior year. The sophomores could be fifty-five. And then twenty-twenty-seven and anybody after that would be fifty-six credits. That's two additional credits for graduation from what we have right now. Right now, you can take fifty-six classes and only have to have fifty classes to graduate. But because we're not giving students in the five-by-three any periods off for taking two college courses because we're adding a study time, our guided study hall, in that slot to offer some opportunities within the school day for some time that maybe is a little bit of downtime for them or time to do some studying also. Questions about credits? Like I said before, we tried to be really fair coming out of COVID. Our juniors and seniors listed next year. We kept one off there just because of some of the things we've dealt with with COVID. But our 10th graders and freshmen would not get any benefits of that because they were here basically when we've been in the building full-time this last year and this year, or next year, and then the sophomores would be freshmen. One of the things we've talked about within this is outer time is a big deal for us, an opportunity for us to get to build those long-lasting relationships with students. One of the things we would do is we will start as early tomorrow if this is a yes, is start talking about which teachers will be separated into ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade guided study halls, which were the outer time. And those student, teachers would be with that group of students until they graduate. So incoming freshmen next year will have the same study hall teacher or outer time teacher for four years. The idea of that is they're going to get to know the student, the parents, really, really well. Have met them at least four times for registration and one time when they do eighth grade, getting ready for what's next in the high school during registration slash conference night. Some of the things that we're really focused on is social-emotional opportunities there, and a big piece of that is goal-setting and organization. One of the things we see kids really struggling with right now is setting goals and making plans. And then what happens when you take a right and now your plans have to change but your goal didn't? So how do you continue to look at that and update those things as you go on from trimester to trimester, year to year, and then to graduation? The other piece is organization. When you ask kids, "How do you organize or use your agenda?", they'll be like, "What are you talking about?", and then they'll have all their stuff just put in their backpack or not organizing their Chromebook, which has their Google folders and such in it. So some of the things we'll be working on. The other big one is obviously career and college readiness. We want to guarantee that all students that walk out of this building as a senior have had four years that every box that we set up for them has been checked. They know exactly what we've asked of them and they have made a plan that will get them ready and be prepared for life after high school. Does this mean they're all going to go on to college and be successful? No, they have to make choices when they go to that pace or space, or if they go to work. But we want to bring those opportunities to them in guided study hall. How do we guarantee that when you go out and you're ready to get a job, applications, resumes, interviewing, all those type of things? The same thing for college readiness. How are you getting ready? Are you doing all the little things the colleges are expecting of you when you apply and getting ready for life after us? Additional supports, one of the things we have started this year is we are offering students retakes in all courses except for college courses. They have seven days to take that. We're doing that with preparation of moving to the five-by-three. Hearing some good things from kids. The kids who have retaken tests already have already done better. So the whole idea of understanding and gaining mastery of content is our purpose. We'll look at that and see how we can strengthen that moving into when we have a designated time during the day. What does it look like? So is that a piece that we need to look at in our guaranteed curriculum? What is it that we're going to do? And so when a kid has to meet that mastery, we as a building will talk about what that percent is. So when they retake those tests, that if they retake one in math and they had a seventy percent and our mastery is ninety percent and they have to retake it in the areas they didn't pass to make that ninety percentile. We have opportunity for homework support, which is big. Sometimes kids miss during activities, music productions and things like that, and the opportunity to come back and get a little additional homework support before they retake a test or take a test or turn work in. And one of the big things here is there's ownership on not on just the staff to sign kids up. And we want to teach kids to start making choices that are important to them. So on Mondays, they'll have their time with us and do the activity for our SEL, but they're going to decide where they're going to be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Who do you need to go see because of what your grades look like? What needs do you have retaking tests? How are you planning these out? You need to put yourself into that teacher's classroom so you can be there to do what you need to do that's relevant to that class and what benefits you. The piece of this that will be really flexible for staff, and there are going to be times when the teacher's going to say, "I'm only letting six kids in my outer time", which will be absolutely a hundred percent a great thing because there might be six kids that are still trying to master something that they've already moved on from. And how is that teacher going to guarantee that? Well, I have to limit who's going to be in my class. So we'll have other spaces. We'll use some of the auditorium and media center during some of that time to offer some other flexibility for teachers when they need to get to a really small group to do those guaranteed curriculum things that we're looking for. Questions about our outer time? Some of the other things that we've talked about, we want to develop that culture for a well-rounded student. Obviously, just coming into the building and going home at the end of the school day, we want them to start being organized and planned and using their agendas. I was in a classroom last week with a bunch of seniors, didn't think they'd be using their agendas that we have supplied for them, and lo and behold, they're using them. Not to the best of their ability, but they have some things in there that they're using them for some goal-setting that we've done, not planning their days per se. Some of the things we want to talk about is student achievement as the district's strategic plan. We're already talking about attendance, student-staff recognition. What professional developments will we need? We know there's going to be some things that we're going to be changing. How we teach? You're not going to stand in front of a class now for fifty minutes because you have sixty-seven. How do you do a ten-two and two approach where you only speak for ten to fifteen minutes? Offer kids a couple of minutes to work, reflect with their peers next to them, and then give back information to the teacher so they know, where the teacher knows where they're going to go next in their lesson and instruction. So there'll be some of that opportunity for us for professional development. MTSS is multiple tiers of student support, which is our outer time. Place to get that. And one thing we haven't read and has been a really big one is the transition into ninth grade. We know that our failures happen at a high rate there. Students now have to take credits seriously, which had never been on their plate before. What can we do in that transition with our staff and some mentors with our students in 11th and 12th grade that would help out? And what would that look like moving forward in outer time where they come down and mentor kids to make sure they're moving forward in the right direction? And if we have kids who are struggling, how do we connect them with those mentors a little more often to help support them in those things too? Obviously, our implementation of PBL offers us a little additional time for those hands-on and project-based opportunities and implementing those ISTI standards that we already have that we now need to place in our content. Clear curriculum choices, so common formative and substantive assessments. One of the things we'll be doing is reviewing our instructional practices along with the data that we have, and we started doing that this year. We'll do it more in-depth as we move. The big piece is in the five-by-three with the longer period, we have to have a variety of instruction, which is key. So you just can't stand and talk to your students. You have to offer them a variety of best practices to have the opportunity to work in small groups and partner. And one of the things that has worked actually very well and the staff has worked hard on, they did not finish this, so they've asked for additional time at our next PLC meeting, is our equity magnifier. What are the barriers in the way in our departments or in our school policies? Some really good ones have come up. So they're really focusing on those when they look at what courses they offer. Who's in those courses and who's allowed to be in them are really good conversations that are happening right now. And a couple of departments have asked for an additional PLC time to make that happen, which I have no problem with. And the final question I ask is with that piece is do all our students have access to rigorous coursework, which is a priority for me? All students need to be able to have the opportunity to take courses that they qualify for. And closing, I talk to our staff about this all the time. We're always in this together. Together, we can do anything. The question I always pose to them and leave with them is how would we value student needs that we know exist and remove barriers that get in the way to create opportunities for all students in their career and college pathway that transforms our school climate? So kind of my third opportunity to stand in front of you, talk about the five-by-three, some of the things that I wanted to hit on. We are very much focused on our strategic plan, your mission, vision and beliefs. Our portrait of a graduate fit into this more than what we have right now. Will there be bumps year one? Yes, there will be. Just getting used to it and having people change their fifty to sixty-seven-minute times, those will be things that we'll have to be very laser-focused on and do some professional developments as we go through the rest of the year and into beginning of next school year.
And if I recall correctly from your previous presentations, the staff have been fully
Yep.
informed and they're on board.
Yep.
And the mentor piece, I think you mentioned that for some of the staff it might be a different facet
Yep.
of interacting with kids.
Yep.
But it sounds like that's being well-received.
Yep. They know that. They're aware of that. They understand it benefits their department. So it's not just about getting kids into electives, but our staff are truly understanding all aspects of what a kid's expected to do, meaning graduation requirements. If I'm interested in engineering as a ninth grader and then all of a sudden there's a sophomore saying, "I think I want to be a doctor", where is that career pathway and what courses do I need to then flip and switch moving into my next three years? We'll never lock a student in as a freshman to their senior year that you're only, now you said you're going to be an engineer and you can only be an engineer. They'll have the freedom to make those changes. Will they be as well-rounded as another student going into college? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe they won't have taken some of the courses that other ones have that were locked into that piece. But what we do know is I as myself, I have a son that lives with me right now. He isn't even ready to have the conversation of what he wants to do for the rest of his life and he's twenty years old. My daughter changed her mind eight times at least her senior year. So we want that flexibility. I think it's a good thing.
And forgive me if I'm, you've answered this before, but do we have a specific SEL curriculum that we've chosen already?
Nope. There's one out. My mind is blank right now. I have access to it. I've written a lot of the things we've used and taken it for professional developments. It's, Jeff, we had it. It's, I can't remember the name of it. I can send it to you, but it has all kinds of lessons in it and activities that we would go through as a high school and place in on our Monday that is relevant to our Minnesota Student Survey. So we're going to really narrow in on what did our survey tell us? What are the things we need to be focusing on? Maybe we won't talk about everything next year in SEL in the whole scope of thing because we feel that this is what our kids are telling us. So we're going to narrow it down to one or two topics and just keep working on that throughout the school year.
Great. Well, so then we won't necessarily have like a pre-formatted curriculum, but we'll just take the ideas and implement what we need for us.
Yep. And the lesson we had last Wednesday was goal-setting. So it was already prepackaged. It was a high school ninth through 12th grade presentation that I was able to put a few notes to. And the teachers then had the opportunity on Wednesday first hour to go through with their students what it meant to set goals and not just easy ones, like high expectations and what does it mean to meet those goals.
Okay. So is there any connection then between the middle school and elementary school SEL and what high school students are doing?
So a lot of the things they're working on right now is some of the things we have. Goal-setting is a big thing for us at the high school right now because we want our kids to start focusing on what they need and want moving forward. Yes, those would be things that we'll be looking at in those pieces, making sure that we're doing some of the very similar things. And it's a document that Jeff actually shared with us as the building principals that we work off of, that we know they're going to get from preschool all the way through their senior year.
You may be addressed this before. I missed the last time.
Yep.
I apologize. But has anybody said, "Well, maybe this is too much at one time. You're asking for project-based learning and ISTI standards and now a five-day period and a trimester." Can they be separated out or do they need the two?
So the project-based, they've already had their lesson, so now it's just a matter of whether they're going to implement it. We had them review the ISTI standards last year. Almost every department has something in almost every area, so it's a matter of taking that and making sure it's either in their PBL or being used on the standards alignment document. When we talked about this, this was something that, this came from our students and our staff. So they knew, last year when they asked about it and they said, "Can we go to it this year?", Chain and I put the brakes on and said, "There's more to this than you know. There's some alignment and concept on scope and sequence that needs to happen." And now that we've done it and we're moving in that direction, if we move that way, we have very specific planned-out opportunities above and beyond the hours that we have set by the district for our staff to actually get to that and finish.
One more question.
Yes.
Has there been input from other teachers that are in like Purim or other school districts? Have they been able to, have the teachers talked to them?
I think some have because there's some that live in over in Purim and things like that. I know a couple have reached out to other schools that have researched. Those are things we've talked about. This year, I know a couple of people in the cities that we could go to and visit that have run one for a five-period day for quite a while and would be willing to have us come up there and see what they do.
I know I have a friend of mine that teaches there and I visit her class often and she said, "We do not want to go back to quarters and semesters."
Yep. And that's the, I talk to my kids about that. Both my kids never, they both had a five-period day. It was a little different period, five-period day. Both of them said, "There's no way". They would have wanted to be in seven classes in a school day. I was on a seven-period day, but I have a study hall every day, which really means I had a six-period day.
Okay. Thank you.
I haven't seen the final itinerary for breakout sessions for the MRAA Education Summit, but one of the gentlemen that had submitted a proposal is the expert on the five-by-three that Mark's referenced before. So if he's presenting, it would be a nice opportunity if some of the board wanted to hear from one of the probably national leading experts on it to travel an hour and fifteen minutes and see him.
I've been in a couple of meetings with him. I would be willing to use some of my curriculum funds to have him come and visit with our staff when we get ready to schedule. If we move this direction to schedule and best practices, because he has it very well set that here are some expectations. You follow this, you're going to get the results you asked for.
Well, this is a comment. I'm not going to make a comment.
You can comment.
Okay. Thank you for your leadership on this and I'm excited and it'll be a very good change for our district and for our students.
Yeah. The integration of the outer time with the mentorship, that, I mean, we're going to hit paydirt with that because it's those relationships. We've given lip service to that for a long time and now we'll have a spot in the day where that happens.
Yep.
It's wonderful. Other than, any other comments?
Agreed.
Great. Well, thank you. We'll have that on the agenda and the business for board vote tonight.
Thank you.
And we'll move on with our reports to Kirby Anderson.
Okay. The Five-Forever Education Foundation has not met since my last report. We'll be meeting on Thursday of this week. Activities committee has not met either. Finance committee, we did meet on the 29th of September. Jeff and Renee were sitting in with Natalie and Matt and I, and we went with Ellers, Jody and Jody Zesba and Matt Hammer. And we kicked around a number of issues on financing for Lincoln, most of which we covered already last week, or two weeks ago. So that, we covered some when we had our meeting on the 5th in the morning. That's right, it wasn't earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. We talked about some of those. Anyways, it was kind of the number of dollars we wanted to get the least of. We talked about fifteen-year bonds versus five-year bonds. We talked about the tax impact, which we covered at our October 5th meeting on homeowners ag, properties and commercials. So we kind of went through all of that in anticipation of having our special meeting that we had last week on Thursday morning. So that's all I had. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Kirby? All right. Onto my board reports. Region one doesn't have anything remarkable. Continuing to just refine the programs that they offer for support services to the school districts and implementing the time clock app that they have, both computer-based and then they're actually doing a phone app for that as well. So that's going to be an option for school districts instead of time clocks plus time tracker, it's called. So we talk about that routinely, significant because they developed the program in-house and collaborated with some of the other region service providers. So other than that, just reviewed the budget, which is usually in a very healthy spot in that board. Today, we had a special ed cooperative meeting and it was a general board meeting, so all eight member districts and their eight school superintendents were represented and had a short presentation on early childhood services. And Jessica Ragus, Kara Johnson and Jenny Swanson came in and described what they do in providing services for the zero to three-year-olds in the community. So a lot of people don't realize that the Help Me Grow referral results in Special Education Cooperative. Employees come into the home and assessing and working with your kids. Just really a wonderful service that they provide. So they went through the dynamics related to that. We did a very significant move today in presenting the new bylaws for the cooperative and asking each member district to take that back and have it approved. Didn't change, it won't change much for the operating dynamics, but it will quantify a lot of what was unsaid in our old bylaws. So that was the most significant things in that meeting today. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Just a question on special ed co-op. Was there any discussion, has there been any discussion now that's now passed in October here, just about any uptick in needs through the co-op itself from other districts and stuff, including ourselves, just with services need to be rendered?
We talked about it a lot internally. I can say that.
Yeah. The child count for the Special Education Cooperatives comes in officially on December 1st.
Okay.
And so until that time, I think it's more speculative than factual.
Sure.
So we will be getting that information fairly soon. The director, new director, Jackie Ward, has implemented some additional programming and some elaboration on our current services and she continues to strive for that and be more inclusive and serve as many kids with needs as we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for me? Otherwise, we'll shoot right down the line for Missy Bernies.
Okay. And the policy committee has not met yet, but will be meeting and will probably organize a meeting tonight. But staff development met last week and they have sent out, and you had it in your packet, their plan for the coming year. And one thing I wanted to draw your attention to was the budget. And the reason that that budget was larger than it normally would is because they were allowed one more time to carry over money from the previous year to this year. So next year, it should go back to the regular amount. The things that we're talking about next, that were discussed next month is the, remember, we're starting to now have our in-services in November instead of having them both in the spring. And so the one that's coming up on November 4th, which is soon, is a lot on the district initiatives that we have and is mostly planned by the principals. And the next one is in February and there was discussion about that and there was. But one thing I really, another thing I want to draw your attention to is cultural competency training. And remember, when teachers are re-licensed, they have to go through that. And it looks like that the Continuing Education Committee is going to take that on this time instead of the Staff Development Committee, which might make sense. So.
Okay. Anything to add? Okay. So Missy particularly addressed the staff budget because that also is on the agenda for vote later. Okay. Natalie Knutson?
The Wellness Committee met a couple of weeks ago and there was a variety of different things discussed, but some of the main things, this Wednesday is Walk to School Day. So I don't know that there's anything formal happening, but hopefully the schools will get outside and honor that. It looks like it's going to be a nice day. And then, so Brooke McCon was filling in for Jen. She's still on maternity leave or she might be back now this week. Anyway, she talked about the vaping sensors that have been installed in the bathrooms and she reported that the alarm or the sensor went off sixty-five times in ten calendar days.
Was that in September?
Yes. Yeah, it must have been because our meeting was at the end of September. So in a ten-day period, it went off sixty-five times. So now they're trying to, and you probably know this, just figure out a process on when they go off, what happens.
I can, want me to stand up?
Sure.
All right. There's multiple reasons they might go off. One is because there's a lot of noise in there, which then would alert us to that it's not vaping. It might be an incident going on in there that's, could be a scuffle. The other one is if The other one is if it is a vaping situation, it's the time on the camera and the time that the sensor goes off is about a leg of a minute or two. So right now, we have to go on cameras and find out who was in there. So then we bring them in. When I say we, I really mean Shane most of the time. But we go in and look and then we're able to have that conversation with the student like any time. They don't hide them in places that we have them empty. They usually have them in places we are not going to go search. But yes, we've had a, and I would say we're not seeing, we also do a very nice job of going standing by bathrooms with adults at certain times, then the sensor doesn't go off because we can watch on our phone and we can watch when the tech, when the email comes to us that there's been something happening. What we're seeing a lot of it is after school, after practices, or when somebody, something else is happening inside the building. Or just as, almost as much of the emails that are coming versus the emails during the school day.
Interesting.
Yes.
But it hasn't decreased since September.
Well, this, I only saw three today, which is not a very light day. So that's not, that's pretty normal. I'm guessing I'll have one tonight. There's something sound, so there'll be, those things happen too. But it comes up with different wording. It comes up with vaping and it comes up with aggravation or something like that. So. But we, we see as many at night or more than we do during, during the day. Today was a light day. I don't think I saw more than three come across my email. And usually they're in and out of somebody else's office really quick when that happens.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then we also touched on the THRAG initiative that Leah Jester partnered with the school district on last year. And she's put together a full report in kind of a presentation format. So Superintendent Drake and I have been talking a little bit about what to do with that. In food service, Lance just talked about some of the supply chain issues still. They've been making a lot of their food. Lincoln School, the cook out there is a registered dietitian. So she's been making everything from scratch this school year. So that's been kind of fun. If you follow them on Facebook, he's posting all the time. You can kind of see some of the fresh stuff they're bringing in and things they're trying. And then I had asked about the free and reduced lunch applications. So I got that information from Kelly Nelson late last week. And our numbers have gone up significantly. One of the reasons why is now the state of Minnesota is automatically submitting the Medicaid population, which is helpful. So we, two of our schools are over the fifty percent mark now. And then we have four schools right around between forty and forty-four percent. So yeah, our push has really helped. The communication's really helped. I think there could be opportunity yet still to go. But that puts our district right around forty-one percent as an average. So.
All right. Questions or comments for Natalie? Thank you. Moving right on to Matt Lemke.
Okay. For Lakes County Service Co-op, we had, the Minnesota Service Cooperative had their annual convention this last week. And we had some speakers come and speak and I had put together something real quick, just to share. I'm just going to do some highlights here. First of all, we had the Minnesota State Demographer come and speak to us. And I, I think it's always interesting to hear now that we've had the census. So from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, Minnesota grew in population by seven point six percent. Seventy-eight percent of that growth was in the seven county metro area. So the majority of that was there.
That's the way we like it?
Otter Towne County, it was one of the counties that did grow though. So it was, it was, it was good to see that. There was fifty-one counties that grew in population and we were one of them. And thirty-six counties lost population. One thing though, to just, just with the size of Minnesota, if you put the Minnesota, seventy-five percent of the Minnesota population is, makes up the seven county metro, Rochester and Duluth area make up seventy-five percent of Minnesota's total population. So we're in the twenty-five percent. What do you think about that? I mean, just, it's, so when you say you're in the majority of the minority, yeah. We are a minority in, you know, in the state in that part of it. And the other thing that they said, the baby boomer population, there's another ten years to go. And so she just made the statement that the labor force is projected to stay flat for the next ten years. So you will not see an increase necessarily, just that things will stay pretty flat. So with new jobs and more of that, there'll still be a shortage. And again, there's already a lag between, you know, positions being, being able to be filled with people actually seeking them. And she just said that it's going to continue on. It's not going to stop for at least the next ten years. Then the, just talking about legislatively wise, Minnesota change that's coming. And I just thought this was interesting is that the Minnesota House and Senate will have around a forty percent of new members. So between the two bodies, there'll be forty percent of new members within the bodies. So that is a lot of change. It'll be a change in dynamics of just how they operate somewhat too. And so it will be interesting where all this change does. But it was definitely some interesting things that they were talking about.
Yeah, because of the red.
Redistricting and also people retiring.
Okay.
So there's just people that are retired and, and so it just, I mean, just like even like for Minnesota, for school board members. There'll be at least four hundred new school board members in the state of Minnesota, at least four hundred.
Wow.
Yeah. So this, again, change. So change is definitely happening in Minnesota. And how that change will be, you know, like they say, change is three things. Either stays the same, gets better, or gets worse. So we'll see how change happens. So that was kind of an interesting. And then the other one I just want to talk about real quick is just Brooks Harper came and spoke and passion your profession. And I thought just some soundbites that he had, some things that he had said, they're simple sayings, but man, as I thought about it, it's so true. One of them that he said that I just, his price may be the same, but the cost is never the same for people. So I think even in school for kids in grades, you might get an A, but the amount of work that I might have to put in compared to you having to put in may be totally different just because of just how things are. And I thought that is so true that, and even in the world, your price might be the same, but depending on socioeconomic status, the cost is going to be different in the sense of what it costs you. I thought that was really good. The other thing, and I know we've done some stuff on it, is gratitude is good medicine. And this came from University of Davis and just talking about gratitude. And they just said if you have a list, basically of things that you're thankful for, when stress is coming on, if you can periodically look at that list and just kind of look at it, that they seen a twenty-three percent reduction in stress hormones, cortisol in people. And again, just having that attitude of being grateful instead of what I have instead of what I don't have. So it was just kind of a good reminder on that things. And the other one that they had is that he talked about and I really liked is your name is your brand. So we talked about Nike, just do it and stuff like that. And he just said, you know, when you're going to go out in the workforce and a lot of it is this is, is that, he said, they can guarantee you, the one thing that they will do is after your interview is done, is they will type your name in Google. And what's going to come, what's going to be the top thing that's going to come up about you?
Good or bad?
Yeah. So like he had used an example of a lady and a young woman in college. They had a student of about a month, you know, and they had a nice write-up about her. And that was on the third line. But he said on the second line was her Twitter account. He said, unfortunately, that was not a PG thirteen Twitter account. He just made the comment, you know, just, it's good to remind, mind students and remind people in general that your name is your brand and that what you put out there, people will see eventually.
Forever.
Yes, forever. So. And the other one that I liked too was more you learn, the more you earn, I think in life. And that's can be with, with just in general, I thought that was pretty good. And he also just talked about, one thing I like to do is that you will be the average of your top five. So he just said that, he just said, he goes to schools and he'll go in, he'll look and see how people are sitting. And they'll ask, you know, where do you rank? And he had this one school he talked about that the person said, well, I'm third. And he said, oh, you're not first. He goes, no, that's number one, that's number two, that's number four, that's number five, I'm number three. So he just said that your top five is kind of, kind of where you, you'll be in the middle of that usually. So I'll be close friends and that. And so again, one of those things. And then the biggest thing that he talked about, I guess for adults and again for school districts is just to be that bridge to make goals possible. Is that he just said, hey, a lot of people make goals, have goals, but they don't know how to get to that goal. And that's where we come in, is to make that bridge and make it possible for them and also make it realistic so they understand it too. Sometimes people have goals that are, are just not, don't line up to what they're trying their process to get there. So just some good things that he had to say and I, it was a good, good reminder. And so, but yeah, that's what Lakes County Service Co-op had to, so I thought I have to speak on that. And we had our meeting met right there and it was short and sweet. So that was kind of nice. Then the League of Minnesota Cities, I, League of Minnesota Cities, good grief, long place.
Different zone.
Minnesota High School League, there we go. The league was there too. That's why I just brought it up. But anyway. The Minnesota High School League did meet October sixth. And just some highlights on that and I have it here. The proposal to increase games in both baseball and softball. Remember, we had talked about there was a proposal to change it from twenty to twenty-four. That was denied by the board of directors for both. So we'll stay at a max of twenty. The clay target, the board did approve the proposal at girls only division to individual competition of clay target that's state meet. So that was approved. And then there were some additions done. One was with music is that guitar will now be a category for music contests. I guess it was not before. So now it will be.
Like classical guitar or just guitar?
It's just guitar solo, guitar assemblies of two to four participants. Assemblies from five to sixteen and guitar orchestra, eight to thirty. So that's kind of an interesting. And the other thing that they, they did set is the timelines for competitive section placement and for district football, which of course drives everything for all the sports because your numbers is kind of where you get lined up in your sections. And everybody pays attention to that, especially coaches in the spring. And that is all I have. That's it.
All right. And I agree with that.
The High School League is pushing hard, I mentioned this to Matt earlier, they're really pushing hard for online ticket sales only, no cash at any events. Like last year at the state softball tournament in Mankato, if you didn't, if you didn't have a ticket, you had to get, you couldn't get in. And so then finally, one of the managers came and took cash from people and used his smartphone because some people don't have smartphones. And so they're pushing hard for that. A lot of schools now are, are limiting cash, are limiting, limiting cash as much as possible. Some places you can order your food from the concession stand from your seat and then go pick it up. So, and they'll pay by card of course. So there's all of that going on. And then the other comment I had for you on, you talked about the number of legislators changing hands. I don't know if you guys looked at your clippings from today from MSBA, but they said in twenty years, our inflation adjusted funding from the state of Minnesota has gone down. This year, it's just under eleven thousand dollars. If you adjust two thousand and three for inflation, instead of just under eleven thousand, it was thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two. So we're down twenty-five, twenty-six hundred dollars per, just do it per year with inflation adjusted. And then they also said, when we happen to have a nine billion dollar surplus. So anyway, so we'll see how that works. So, okay.
Okay. Very good. Steven Vigasup?
Curriculum review actually meets next week. So I don't have any report yet.
All right. And Superintendent Drake?
Change the date on that. Well, first, some congratulatory notes for some people. Good evening. The Hall of Fame was held. And so this is a conjunction of Fergus Falls ISD five four four and the Five Forty Four Education Foundation. Really was a wonderful evening, kind of kicked off with some social events on September thirtieth during their homecoming game. Chance for the inductees to come back home if they've are outside the area and renew some old acquaintances. And then the main celebration and honoring of our new recipients happened Saturday evening, October first, with dinner catered by the Legion at five thirty and the induction ceremony at six thirty. And so congratulations, Gary Schuler, David Lundin and Phil Arneson were inducted. And the accomplishments of these three gentlemen are really quite extraordinary. What they were able to do in their, in their career field, some of them still active. And so that really spoke highly of Fergus Falls Public School District in our community. And then this is the first, as I understand it, first team that's ever been inducted into the Hall of Fame. It was the two thousand and eleven Minnesota Boys Class A Swimming and Diving State Champions. They remain to this day the only team that has finished first in state competition in the school's history. And I would say there must have been six or seven of those young men that were part of that team that were able to attend the induction ceremony. And all of them spoke briefly. And so one of the things that was really interesting for me as an audience member was to hear what they're doing with their lives now and the impact especially of their coaches that they had on them while they were going through school. And really those, those life lessons as teammates and life lessons that they learned through their coaches and those relationships that have really carried them on to some pretty extraordinary accomplishments now. The one young man spoke and he, he recounted where every, I think every single one of his teammates that couldn't be at the induction ceremony, where they were living and what they were doing with their life right now, which is really impressive and shows kind of that lifelong bond that those young men formed over this extraordinary accomplishment. Oh, they beat St. Thomas Academy. Who was a juggernaut in the area of swimming and diving and really considered quite an extraordinary upset, kind of like a Hoosiers event for Fergus Falls. And they, they won the state title by the slimmest of margins. But it also pointed out to the fact that how many of those, those kids competed and earned points via re-licence, et cetera. Mike Hurley, if I'm remembering the name correctly, was really kind of a superstar swimmer. But he had a lot of help with his teammates that really did some extraordinary things as part of that state title as well. So it was truly a, a team accomplishment. Congratulations to Mindy Christensen, our language arts teacher at the high school. She is the recipient of the California Casualty Award for Teaching Excellence. She is the lone represent, representative of the state of Minnesota. And Mindy will go on to attend a gala event in early May in Washington DC along with the other state recipients. So certainly a wonderful recognition of her skills as an educator and commitment. But a nice feather in the cap for our district and our community as well. So congratulations to Mindy. A number of thank yous. School Custodian Appreciation Week was last, last week. And the one thing that I had indicated in the, my other observations at the end of the week is I was coming out of the cafeteria into the auditorium on the evening of the induction, Hall of Fame induction. And I heard a gentleman behind me, he was probably ten feet behind, say, look how shiny the floors are. And so it's just another example that people do notice the pride that people take in the facilities. And the work that they do every day does really show up. And again, these folks have been operating short staff now for a couple of years. So really appreciate all they do. We also had World Teachers Day last week. Uh, we also had, uh, World Teachers Day, uh, last week. And this, uh, was really just an honor to the profession of, uh, education and the work teachers do across not just the US but the world, and what a huge difference they make in the lives of people. And then it was a busy week for honoring people that are tied to education, uh, but it was National Coaches Day as well. And, uh, speaking personally, uh, my experience in high school, I had some coaches and advisors that just had a remarkable impact on my life. In addition to some wonderful teachers and just an opportunity to, uh, remind them what a huge impact that they make on all the young people that they come into contact with. Uh, wanna make sure everyone who helped with our homecoming week, uh, is, um, recognized. Especially Mr. Tilke and the student council, uh, really had a wonderful homecoming week. Uh, the weather was great. Uh, the parade was wonderful. Um, the football game didn't have the ending maybe we had hoped for, but, uh, it was a very nice evening. Uh, huge thank you to Minnesota Motors for sponsoring free admission, extremely generous on their behalf. And then we had the return of the halftime show. Which I think the whole crowd enjoyed and certainly, uh, music department was very excited to show off, uh, the talents of our young musicians and the whole crowd really, really enjoyed that. Principal Anderson had mentioned the, um, Portrait of a Graduate. So you see, um, forward and to my right, uh, that is an example of what's now hanging in our uh, teachers' classrooms and in other strategic locales throughout the district. If you get a chance, um, afterwards, uh, go up and take a good look at it. Uh, we had them printed locally and it's really a nice, high-quality, um, production there, so. Really pleased with how those turned out. And this is part of one of our district goals to have all of our staff familiar with our, uh, vision for honor education. Facility updates, uh, I do have an update from the ALC bathroom, I'll talk about that. I'm simply going to say, if you look at that picture and the one I'm gonna show you, progress is being made, it's just happening at a much, um, slower pace than what we had hoped for. Uh, this is a photo, uh, taken this afternoon of the Bat Court Club's, uh, outdoor basketball court, uh, project. Over by the playground next to the football field, so they have, uh, three sections of concrete now poured. Um, and some additional work to go on, I believe still this fall. I believe at the very least they were going to set the poles. Uh, and then I understood that they were going to probably do, um, some sod to, uh, on the periphery of the, of the concrete at least, uh, through this fall. Uh, this is the ALC bathroom. Uh, you'll notice, uh, there are no toilets there yet or urinals. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, with our contractor, uh, there was an oversight and so they had neglected to order the panels, the partitions. So we either move forward with a very open concept to a bathroom, I'm just kidding, no. We're not doing that, just to clarify. Uh, or it's going to delay the finish of the, um, of the project a few more weeks. Uh, the latest update, uh, but Doug will confirm this with me probably, uh, tomorrow, is that, uh, the panels, the partitions are going to be shipped on October twenty-first. It will likely take a week to get here, uh, and then X number of days, uh, to have them installed. So we're getting closer, uh, but we are not there quite yet. And again, my thanks to the city who's been very gracious in accommodating our ALC students with the, uh, city facilities over at the Ice Arena. And this is a photo, uh, these are three separate, um, awning, um, pieces. All three were damaged by the falling snow and ice last year. Uh, they've been replaced. These are, Doug's been really pleased with the quality of the construction on this. What we are running still into issues on however, is the mitigation system that's going to be installed on the, uh, roof of the old rec gym. Uh, we are working with buttweilers. They're kind of backlog with work and, um, a shortage of employees, so we are on the list. Uh, Doug calls them frequently, uh, so they're not forgetting about us. Uh, but it's also getting late in the fall and as the weather tends to turn worse eventually, we really need that work done, uh, in the very near future, so that is ongoing. Um, we have lock blocks. Uh, these are a very simple device, uh, but they enable teachers, uh, to lock their doors if they don't have an, um, interior door lock. They allow them to lock their doors, uh, in case of threat, uh, without having to step out into the hallway. Like a lot of things, uh, the supplies were backordered. Uh, the company is expecting a shipment of the pieces to arrive in mid-October. And then they will put the pieces together and then ship them out, uh, to the, uh, people who placed orders in the order that, um, their purchase order was received. So those are coming, I'm guessing kind of mid-November on those. We ended up ordering, and this was based on teacher or faculty request, about, I believe, two-hundred-and-twenty of those units somewhere in that neighborhood.
Was there a manual?
Yep, um, so you keep your door locked in this little kind of, uh, kind of a rubber plastic piece. Fits between the door frame and the locking mechanism. So when you wanna lock the door, your door's already locked, but you just slide that, um, piece interior and then pull your door shut. Very, very simple and very quick. Uh, I don't know if humor's appropriate or not, uh, but I did, and my wife actually sent me this cartoon and it's, uh, just a reflection of the challenges working in the, with contractors these days. Uh, we have had a lot of challenges over the last few months, um, with projects either delayed or, um, changes in plans that have needed to be made, so that is that. Uh, the DACRAC Committee will meet, um, in, uh, in, uh, next Monday. Excuse me, Tuesday, and then, um, that will, um, that will kick off, uh, meetings for, uh, next school year and excited about that process. And Amelia's excited about getting that going. Uh, we'll do things a little differently this year, but, uh, we're um, looking forward to taking some time and doing a little deeper dive on some of our curriculum, uh, with our review committee members. Uh, we have a, uh, College and Career Expo going on, uh, this Thursday, October thirteenth. So we are hosting that. Uh, that's a partnership with the high school and also, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, that's, uh, should be a very nice, uh, day for our students to, uh, meet with some employers and learn more about, uh, career and college readiness. And then this was the piece that I wanted to, uh, show people a couple of weeks ago, but we were having some technical problems. Uh, this is the twenty-twenty-two Minnesota MCA Three Student Proficiency Scores. So you have, uh, off on your left, three units, math reading and science. And then you have the various grade levels, um, you have a comparison, so this is Fergus Falls Brick and Mortar. So I wanna make sure to clarify that. You have our comparison, which is the green column, uh, with the state. And you see in every one of the, uh, categories, our students outperform the state average, uh, so that's good news. And then, um, the schools that you have listed farther to the right as you look at the, um, at the table. Um, if the, uh, cell is in blue, that means that our students in that grade level on that test scored higher than the school we're comparing it to. If you see a cell that is in white, uh, that means that district students outperformed ours on the proficiencies. And then there are a couple of cells that are in gray with, uh, not applicable, uh, where we didn't have reports for some reason for, uh, those categories. So all in all, uh, we can be very pleased, uh, with how we did regionally on these, uh, proficiency tests. Uh, they're only one measure of school quality, uh, but it is one of the few apples-to-apples comparisons we get to make, uh, with our neighboring schools, so, uh, we do take a lot of pride in, uh, in how that turned out in our student performance and my appreciation to all of our staff uh, who worked hard with these kids during some pretty challenging circumstances over the last couple of years. And then I will turn it over to questions.
Looks like Alec's still doing pretty good.
Alec's still doing pretty good.
On the Hall of Fame, David Lundin was up there and, um, I knew David pretty well through Rotary and he passed away about two and a half years ago, but uh, when you just think about things you do in your life, I mean, when he started the Five Forty-four Foundation, he was one of the founding board members. And I don't think even after he got done in two thousand fourteen, he would have had any idea how successful that, that entity has become. And, uh, I know he got to see a lot of success the last years of his life, but, uh, that was something that he was one of the, he did a lot of the, the legal work, of course, he was an attorney, but, uh, uh, was a, he was one of the founding members and, uh, it was, uh, so it's a great thing because of, of his work, so.
It was fun to see the members of that swim team too, because that was such a neat group of young men. And even in the summer when they swam with little five and six, seven-year-olds, they were just remarkable. And I got to see one and it was just, um, you know, I was out doing stuff that day and I'm Andrew and, gosh, it's fantastic to see him.
Tom Hinchin had a nice write-up on, on the team in the last journal on Saturday, I believe.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Well, one other thing, I think this is, this week is National School Lunch Week or something. That's on the line.
All right.
There's so many of them.
I know. You better not forget that one since, since now we've been talking about it.
Our next agenda item is on general consent items for consideration for approval. The minutes from two, um, prior meeting, September twenty-sixth, regular board meeting, and then our special meeting held last Thursday morning, October sixth. And then bills and treasuries report.
Yes, treasuries report. Um, our, uh, general fund balance is, uh, pretty much unchanged from last month. Uh, we have about the same amount of money coming in as we had going out. Um, one, one difference that we saw within, within the accounts, um, uh, the community ed was one that we had transferred some money out last year and, uh, have seen some, um, see that their deficit has actually been cut about in half just in one month. And we talked about that at the time, that there, this is the time they kind of make hay is in the, in the fall, so it's that particular portion of the treasury report is looking good as well. Um, on the bills, uh, Matt, Matt Lemke came in and visited with, uh, with Renee and went through the bills. Um, some various things of interest. Carlson Music Center, we had about sixty-two hundred dollars for a new piano. We had a few things related to Lincoln, R.A. Morton for ten thousand and, and then we had, uh, a bill that was paid to, uh, to Zerberg for, I believe it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We had, uh, uh, workers' comp, thirteen thousand, uh, copy machine to Liberty, Liberty, Liberty for sixty-eight hundred. Cleaning supplies, eight thousand, um, thirty-eight thousand to buttweilers on the, on the Kennedy Roof. We had some curriculum things. We had, uh, uh, probably a significant payment went out for the chiller. We had, uh, some to, uh, Christopherson Construction, thirty-seven thousand, then we had about three, four, four hundred and some thousand dollars to Metropolitan Mechanical. And so that was about it. We had some high school football things. We have eleven thousand in vaping sensors. So, uh, I think we had a few questions on the bills. I think Renee did a good job as usual of answering one of the questions, so. Any comments or concerns?
You're hearing me. And then we'll, uh, turn to a little makeup for this. One simple support staff hire.
I'm, yep, short, very short tonight. So support staff hire. Um, Tiana Denston, Special Education Fair Professional at Kennedy Secondary School, effective on October twenty-fourth. I recommend that for approval for hire.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved and we don't have old business, we have new business and we're gonna, uh, uh, turn our attention to the first item. Uh, looking for a motion to, um, approve the twenty-two, twenty-three Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. Would someone offer that motion?
So moved.
I'm second.
I'll second that.
And that, um, simply stated is, um, a document we're, that we'll submit to the state that indicates our personal. Ready?
Absolutely. That we're, like, uh, we have harassment policy in place, that we have, you know, the main mandated training, the, for like bullying policy. Those parts of these, just that, for, for an example, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
It tells a Title Nine officer, our, um, human rights officer, Title One officer. So, plus those types of things. I should have the packet, I think I have the board packet too.
Yeah. All right, any, um, other comments or questions? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Approve, say nay. Moving to the next, uh, item, looking for a motion to approve the high school five-by-three schedule to be implemented in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
I'm a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Any, just, any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. We're off and running. Item number three, looking for, uh, motion to approve a contract for Lakes Country Service Cooperative's secondary vocational services for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Would someone offer that motion?
So moved.
I'm a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the next item is, uh, looking for, uh, motion to approve child and adult care food program contract for vended meals for the Children's Corner, effective from September first of this year to September first next year, twenty-two and three. Would someone offer that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, and then, we have before us the, in our packet, the Facilities Rental Handbook and Procedures. And for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve that. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I did add this line, uh, on there in red that's different from the copy you received. Uh, but just an opportunity for groups leasing the space to help keep their costs down, uh, as applicable and when possible, doing their own setup, takedown and cleaning.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion? Thanks for your work on that, Superintendent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The staff development proposal in our packet is up for approval for the use and implementation of staff development funds for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Would someone make a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or discussion on that topic? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have a resolution and, um, and here, here it is. Be it hereby resolved that the Board of Directors of Fergus Falls Public Schools, Independent School District Number Five Forty-four nominates Matthew Lemke to serve as a Board of Directors nominee to Lakes Country Service Cooperative and authorizes this individual's name to be placed on the ballot to be submitted to Lakes Country Service Cooperative voting members. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, and, uh, any discussion on it? All right, Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
It's a nomination resolution.
Nomination resolution.
All right. And then final item is another resolution. This one for the Minnesota School Board Association platform. Be it resolved, the Minnesota School Board Association urges the legislature to, to bring awareness to the Minnesota statute, or to bring awareness to the Minnesota Department of Education's Interpretation of Minnesota Statute 123B.57 subdivision 6 and Minnesota Statute 123B.595 subdivision 11 and make health and safety funding available to districts who purchase property with the intent of converting the facility to an occupancy E in parentheses rated facility. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Steve. Second? Second. All right, discussion?
As to lobby the lobbyists?
To lobby the lobbyists to let us use LTFM financing for K-12 instead of just preschool. Is that the way they kind of view it?
Yeah, so this process would be, MS, any districts can submit resolutions to MSBA. And then they vote on them and decide which ones they're going to take up as part of their...
It sounds like Marhead's going to put this in as well.
Yep, so, so Fergus Falls and Marhead will basically have co-authored this in a way. So both our names are listed on it. And in the coming weeks, MSBA will go through its process to see if it's one they officially carry. We do believe we have some legislative support to help carry it as well and possibly some champions within the department, so.
Are there any other districts besides these two that you know of that have had issues with that?
That part I don't know, Steve.
So this is just one avenue? This is kind of a parallel effort with working with our local websites as well?
Yep.
All right. And Matt, I, I know you know this, what's an occupancy E-rated facility?
That'd be for education, so E means for education.
Just like Sesame Street.
Very true.
There you go, E for education.
I thought that had a little bit more stipulation to it, but...
Sorry, there's nothing exciting about it, but it is.
All right. Any other discussion? Well done. We'll turn to the clerk for a vote, please. Okay, Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson? Natalie Knutson? The E resolution is adopted. Very good. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. We'll have a work session, whereupon we reference Superintendent Drake's cartoon with the facilities. Begin our next portion of that discussion. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, October 24th, here at the Auto Community Room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that? And all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you for your participation, Stephen.
All right.